The local level. And that, while final decision is not defined in ORS 197-522, generally in the land use arena, final decision means, the final decision including all opportunities to appeal at the local level. And here, the hearings official made the initial decision, two folks, both the applicant and the citizens, timely filed appeals, and so it would be the planning commission's decision that is final at the local level. If no one had filed an appeal, then the hearings official's decision would have been final. So, it's my opinion that the decision is not yet final at the city level, and so the 197-522 would allow the applicant the opportunity to amend or propose conditions of approval. So that's kind of the first issue that came up. The second issue, the citizens noted that as part of the appeal documents, the applicant submitted a site plan but has not yet truly proposed amendments to the application or conditions of approval that would make the application consistent with the land use code. And that's what 197-522 allows the applicant the opportunity to amend or propose conditions of approval to make the application consistent with our land use code. This is, you know, a bit of a timing question. The citizens are arguing that the applicant should have proposed those amendments prior to filing an appeal. As I read, and I don't know, Dan, if you have the, do you have the text of the statute that you could put up on the screen?
ORS?
Yeah. I may or may not have it for you.
I have 3B and I have the beginning.
Okay, this is great.
Okay.
So there's, I don't see anything in the text of the statute that addresses timing of the amendments, you know, before or after the appeal to the planning commission, except that they need to be, the statute needs to be invoked prior to a final decision on the appeal. And I don't think we have a final decision yet, so. Then there's some arguments about whether this is, we don't have amendments yet, but the possible proposed amendments are those, you know, could those be more akin to a new application versus an amended application, and what does that mean? And again, I would just say that as, as I read it, there's nothing in the plain text of the statute that limits the scope of the amendments that can be proposed, except that they need to be proposed to make the application consistent with the land use code. There's an argument about the city being able to deny the application, and once the statute is invoked, the statute does allow denial of a land use application if it cannot be made compliant with the land use code and our comprehensive plan. And I don't think we are at a stage yet where we can say for sure that this application cannot be being compliant. And then the final issue is, oh, the citizens just noted that if, if planning commission decides to move in the direction of staff recommendation and provide more process related to the applicant's invocation of 197-522, that the citizens are requesting the same amount of process as they would be provided related to a new application. And I just wanted to note that staff's recommendation, at least, does that. I mean, staff is recommending a, a new public hearing, reopening of the record, and the ability to appeal the hearings official decision on remand, should planning commission decide to remand the decision back. So, I just wanted to kind of daylight those issues, because I know, at least at the last meeting, planning commission didn't have a lot of time to review the letter, and to make sure that there's an opportunity for discussion of those issues if planning commission so desires, so.
Does anybody have any comments based on the kind of explanation, and I guess maybe even go so far as to say recommendation that, you know, you've kind of laid out for us as far as what your professional opinion of what the interpretation of how this might apply?
I would say that, that as far as the letter goes, I don't see anything in it that would change staff's recommendation, which you have in the form of the recommendation and the draft final order. Of course, planning commission could decide to do something different, but, yeah.
All right. I'll take any questions or comments the commissioners may have on this letter. Okay. Okay, so it looks like we're then ready to proceed with issue number three, which is where we left off. And I know I'm going to go ahead and allow for Commissioner Barofsky to start off in the queue if you want to have some questions answered. I know that that was where we, unless, unless there's an objection to that, but, and then I'm happy to put Commissioner Baker in the queue.
I did have a question for the...
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So it was just a question of, let's assume that someone appeals the invocation of...
Appeals of planning commission's final order.
Well, yeah, I guess final order in, related to this invocation of this state statute. And a decision is made that we didn't invoke it in the proper manner. What, I just want to get an outline of what the consequences would be, or how that works out in the process.
It's a good question. As I said, I feel like a number of times last night, or last night, last meeting, and I assume I will say again tonight, we're, we don't really have a lot of information about how this works. This is the first time in my experience that the statute has been invoked in the city of Eugene. Like I said, I did some legal research, and there are some Luba decisions from a while ago, but not since it was amended in 2015, so I, we just don't have a lot of general knowledge about how this will work. My best guess is that if, if the planning commission's final order were to be appealed up to Luba, and Luba were to say, yeah, for whatever reason, we don't think the applicant had the authority to invoke 197-522, they would remand the decision back to the city. What would happen then would depend in part on, you know, how they framed the remand and what they told the city to do on remand, but my best guess is that we would then kind of step back into the procedural posture of a tentative PUD decision by hearings official and an appeal of that decision, and so that appeal would then be in front of the planning commission, based on the initial proposal by the applicant.
And so would the appeals that have been filed be re-invoked again?
Well, that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Baker, I interrupted you. I think that is related to what staff has identified as issue number four, sort of, do we put them on hold? What happens to these appeals that are kind of hanging out there while we figure out how to do this other process? And so staff's recommendation is that planning commission take an affirmative action to place those appeals on hold, with the thinking that if, if this were to go up to Luba and come back, and Luba were to say, no, just process it based on the applicant's initial proposal, then those appeals could be reactivated kind of right from where they are now. If, if planning commission accepts staff's recommendation, and we kind of step away from our code process and into this remand back to the hearings official, and then the parties would have the ability to appeal the hearings official's decision on remand, then the parties that have already filed appeals and already paid their appeal fees could just amend, kind of pick those appeals back up, amend those appeals so they make sense in light of the hearings official's decision on remand, and move forward with those appeals, so.
I was more concerned about the timing, because four months for Luba, maybe three or four, four months for the quarter of appeals, because I assume this would probably end up, go to the quarter of appeals, the invocation, because it's state statute, it's not really, well, it just seems like it's natural that Luba would punt it in some way. So, say we reopen the, the record and we had new testimony, then what happens if it gets referred back? So now we've had a new hearing, new testimony submitted in regards to this application. What happens? I'm just trying to think through the process so we have a good idea of what we're, you know.
I was going to say, Commissioner Baker, I mean, doesn't some of that depend on how the commission ends up ultimately voting on these recommendations?
I think it does. I think, again, you know, staff has done the best that we can to kind of try to think out different scenarios and come up with something that seems fair and reasonable to all the parties involved and complies with the statutes. But it's impossible, I think, to game out all of, you know, everything that could happen. And so, as far as I see it, the, you know, one decision that's before the commission that I think, at least, there was a unanimous straw poll about at the last meeting, was the timing that staff was recommending. So staff was recommending six months for the applicant to, for lack of better, get their ducks in a row and propose those amendments or conditions of approval, and then six months for the city to process, with the thinking that during those first six months, if there is an appeal of this final order, that's at least enough time for it to get up to Luba and get a decision from Luba. So an option would be, if there's concern about leaving enough time for appeals to extend that first time period, but planning commission did at least on a straw poll basis unanimously agree to that six months, and, you know, there was also some discussion about not letting it linger on and on before the applicant has to propose concrete amendments or conditions of approval. So, I don't know that that fully answers your question, but I think that's the best I can do at this point.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll go ahead and let Commissioner Barofsky answer or ask some questions.
Right, thank you. And I've got a few things that I want to talk about, about appeal issue number three. And for me, this is, as, as the city attorney mentioned, this is the first time that we've had to deal with this. So I'm trying to wrap my head around, one, the process, and try and set a template for possibly getting more of these, because I think that, that we may see more of these in the future, and there's several questions that, and hurdles that we jump over, and they may be different for different types of, of appeals or invocations of this statute. So, my first one is, the, the statute says that in concurrence with the applicant, it can be sent to the hearings official. Was that initiated by staff to have the, the applicant send it to the hearings official, or was that something that was mutually agreed upon? Just get, walk me through that, that, how that, we came to that opinion and how we got the letter from the applicant?
So, just to be clear, it's our code that requires concurrence of the applicant, not statutory. In my opinion, at least, it was, staff had some initial discussions about what we thought made sense and was fair in terms of a process standpoint, and part of those discussions was noting that planning commission had the ability to remand back to the hearings official, and that based on the site plan included with the appeal statement, it appears that the proposed amendments could be substantial and would therefore require reopening the record, and that that is something that is squarely within the hearings official's wheelhouse to hold public hearings and, you know, look at evidence for the first time. Not the planning commission can't do it, but it's, you see it less often.
Right. Okay, and that's good. That got to where I wanted to go. But the reason that I was going to that hurdle first was, again, in upcoming ones, it may be a small adjustment, and to take it and send it to the hearings official, whereas the planning commission could do it. And when, the reason I say that is because if you put it into the hearings official, then that adds another set of appeals and another set of timing. And as we all know, timing is, can cost money on both sides. And it's, it's a separate appeal, whereas if it was a small, small adjustment and made it happen, and it could be, we could open the record and the, the public hearing in front of this commission, that would be a final decision. Then if there is an appeal, it could go to Luba, whereas if it goes to hearings official, it gets appealed, it comes to us. If that gets appealed, it goes on to the hearings. So again, I'm trying to set a template for this process and help figure that out. The next question I had was, how flexible is the role of the planning commission in a situation like this? Because in the applicant's letter, when they thought that it was going to be put in front of the planning commission as the, as the appellate body, you know, the body that would decide, they came up with some questions that they wanted us to answer, policy-style questions. And this is something that I think I've seen in, in appeals in the past, where we've got neighborhood issues, we've got developer issues, and by the time it comes to us on an appeal, it's, it's black and white. Does it meet this criteria? And I'm wondering if this type of, if it came to us, would we have the ability to weigh some of those neighborhood needs against developer needs and make a decision at this body? You know, for example, tree, you know, the number of trees as opposed to the, the number of buildings, and the, some of the policy questions that were spelled out in the applicant's letter. Is that something that this body has an ability to do?
So, I feel like there are a couple of questions. I'm trying to unpack some of those questions a little bit, but to answer the question about flexibility and ability to kind of get into questions more than you otherwise often can on appeal, I think there may be two parts to that analysis. One is, you're right, you're, you most often function as an appellate body, so you are constrained by the record that's already been established, you are constrained by the appeal issues identified by the appallants, and you are constrained by the code requirements, the approval criteria in the code. If you were to act as the initial hearings body, so to, to do what the hearings official does, you would certainly have some more flexibility about, you may have access to more evidence, you may have the ability to, you know, ask questions of more folks at the initial public hearing, and you wouldn't be constrained by those identified appeal issues. You could look at, you know, all of the applicable approval criteria. However, you will still be constrained by the applicable approval criteria. And I know that there have been some discussions about, you know, especially in the context of a PUD, wanting to have more information about specific building sites and other things that aren't currently required by the code. And so I think there are a couple of different questions there. One is, would acting as the initial hearings body give you more flexibility? Yes, but maybe not all the flexibility you would like. And I think to get all the flexibility you would like, it might be a separate conversation outside of a quasi-judicial application about code amendments and, you know, what you, whether you think the approval criteria are really working in the way that we had hoped that they would. In terms of, you know, setting a template for more of these, or, I guess I would just say, planning commission, in my opinion, is not constrained in future invocations of 197-522 by what you choose to do related to this application. The, you will see in the final order, both under issue, I think issue one having to do with the timing, and issue three, we tried to write the draft final order in a way that made it clear that the process that's being proposed is specific to what we think is happening with this application, and what would, what would it, sorry, what it would take to make this application consistent with our land use code. There may well be, as you pointed out, other applications where it's a matter of articulating one condition of approval, and that would be enough to make it consistent with the code, and so there would be no need for all of this process. So, we wanted to make it clear that this process being proposed is specific to this application. I don't think that by adopting this process, or whatever process you choose to adopt, you're tying your hands for future invocations of 197-522. And then a bigger question, kind of outside the scope of tonight's discussion, may be, I think you're right, there may be more of these, and so, you know, is there, does planning commission want to talk about having a specific code process, or some kind of specific requirements related to invocation of this statute? But that's a legislative conversation for another night, so.
So then...
Can I interrupt really quickly?
Sure.
Because I just want to make sure that Commissioner Ramey and Commissioner Fragala had questions, and I didn't know if they were tied to this. If you wanted to go ahead and, okay, let me, let me do that, let me let them go ahead and...
So I think we went, we might have already gone by my first question, but I'll try to, sorry, try to back you up to that one. I can read here where EC9680 allows planning commission to remand the application back to the hearings official. Is there a city code that says, or planning commission can just take it themselves? Or is that their only option that we have?
We're, so, this is not the entirety of the code provision. This is an alternative that planning commission can do. So when an appeal is filed, it comes to you, or in this type three application, it comes to you, and you have the opportunity to, you know, affirm, reverse, modify...
There's more options than are just shown here.
Right.
Okay. Secondarily, if, if you're not to appeal, I promise this is my last question, then you're, you're, you've done your hearing and you realize, uh-oh, maybe this isn't going to go the way you want it to go, I'm going to invoke ORS 197.522, where does that go?
So are you asking if...
Before the hearings official has issued an opinion.
Has issued a decision. As I read the statute, it just says before a final decision, so I think it could happen anytime before a final decision.
Right, but what happens to it then?
Oh, I would think that, well, it would depend on the circumstances, but...
And we would have one of those options to choose from?
If it was within the, that's a good question. I think the recommendation would be if it's in the confines of a code process that, you know, we could continue to move forward with. So if there were, you've had your public hearing, but the hearings official hasn't issued a decision, and I think at that point we would just take a break, let the applicant propose amendments, the hearings official would consider those amendments.
Resubmit materials and just leave it with the HO.
Yeah, and then depending on the...
But who decides that? Does that come back to us to decide, or...
That's a good question. I mean, right now, I think we probably wouldn't... I mean, right now, I think we probably wouldn't bring it to you, because presumably, we could do it kind of within an already established code process. Part of the reason that we're asking you to make this call about procedure is because it just doesn't fit in the appeal process that we have right now.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me. Sorry.
So, yeah, actually, my thoughts were connected to some of what Commissioner Ramey was discussing. I, you know, I feel like when we're thinking about this uncharted territory, and what are the implications of the decisions that we make for any future referrals under 197.522, that the language that we're looking at, both in the legislation and in the order, you know, allow us some flexibility, right? So, Commissioner Barofsky, when you're talking about if something is really little and we want to make sure it turns around quickly, because I support that also, not dragging out these decisions for a long time. I think that a lot of the language, I felt like the language in the order was flexible enough that, and clear enough, that it applies to this decision, and that in the future, if we, if or when we see another referral like this, we will be able to make similar decisions. Maybe we'll have a little more experience with it, but we'll be able to make similar decisions. So, in terms of thinking about the implications of the decision that we're making, I feel like, I feel really comfortable with a lot of the language that we're able to continue to have that flexibility in the future. And in terms of procedural issue number three, I do really feel that the functions that are most attributed to the hearings official are the things that are going to need to happen. And so, that's why I feel like it makes sense, in this case, to refer back to the hearings official.
Thank you. And I agree. I think in this case, we've been given information that definitely lends it to being, landing in the hearings official's basket. The question I have is, is that we were given a kind of a heads-up as to the direction that they were going to go. They didn't have to give us that heads-up. And so, the next question I had was, would it be appropriate for us to make that decision whether to remand it to the hearings official, or keep it in our wheelhouse after we've seen the development proposal? Because in this case, we have an idea, because of, they've given some sense of direction, but they're not bound to that. They've got six months to put it together, and we don't know what it is. We don't know if it's a giant, huge one, or we don't know if it's a small one. So would it be more appropriate to make the decision on number four, after we've seen the actual development proposal, as opposed to saying, yes, it's going to be a big one, it's got to go to the hearings official, where they may come back and say, nope, we figured out a way to do the tree thing? Again, it's just a question, procedural question that we're being asked to answer here.
I will say that, I'm not saying you couldn't do that. I think by virtue of hearings official's decision, that it was in denial, and it was a denial on a bunch of different issues, not just one, that there, regardless of whether or not the applicant proposes amendments that look like the site plan that was attached to the appeal statement, to make the application consistent, based on the hearings official's sort of multifaceted denial, they're going to be big changes, necessarily, the application. And that being the case means that we're going to need to reopen the record. And that being the case, it makes some sense to me, and that's why staff is recommending to send it back to the hearings official. If, in another situation, it might be different.
Okay. And that's why, again, I'm just kind of bringing these things up, because it is a new thing, and I've got those types of questions. One of the last things that I'm going to bring up is the cost. One, the cost for the fee to do this. It said that the applicant can do it and pay a fee. And that fee was $400, as best as I could see it. I'm concerned about that, one, setting that as a precedent, because $400 won't even cover the cost in this room right now of staff. So, I'm wondering, one, where was that fee derived from? Because I didn't see it in the city's fee chart. Obviously, there's not in the city's fee chart. Was that fee imposed with an administrative order out of Chapter II by the city manager's office, in the way that fees need to be put into our code? Again, I want to make sure everything's, all the Ts and Is are crossed, because sometimes if the Is and Ts don't get crossed, like we saw in another appeal issue, they come back to bite us. So, questions there. And then, just, those are the questions. And then the third thing is, if, should, at some point, the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the city council about a way to codify this and get the fees that are actually, you know, incurred?
So, I'll look to Planning staff for help about the name of the fee, but it is adopted, it's in the adopted fee order, which was adopted by the city manager pursuant to Chapter And your question about the, whether the fee really covers the process, it doesn't. And that is, I think, again, outside the scope of this discussion, but another issue which I see, me personally, related to invocation of 197.522, if this is going to happen on a more regular basis, whoever is appropriate, whether it's staff proposing to the city manager, or, you know, some discussion might be appropriate about the right fee that could be associated with that.
Thank you. And thank you to the commission for indulging me on these types of questions.
Commissioner Baker, you had a question?
Yeah, I have some questions on the fee as well, but I just wanted to state for the record that I think it's more appropriate that we refer these complicated land use decisions back to a hearings official to take all this information. None of us on this planning commission are land use experts. We don't really know state statutes, or even our local code, all that well, except what's brought up for us. We're good at reviewing things that are brought up to us, but we're not a good body to review a sort of a blank slate. So I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable if we were to take on these kinds of cases. I don't think the Planning Commission is the right body to take on these cases. It should really be referred back to a neutral party that is a land use expert, which is what we hire the hearings official for. And again, related to the fees, that's my concern. So there's a $400 fee to invoke this? No?
No. The $400 fee is to, has to do with the remand back to the hearings official. So the remand is contemplated by our code, and we do have a fee associated with that. The invocation of 197.522 is contemplated neither by our code nor by our fee schedule. And so, we don't have anything that we, it specifically attaches to that.
Okay. And so, again, what happens, so the entire cost, the applicant has to pay $400, the appellant doesn't have to pay any money for, to get remanded back to the hearings official. Now, what happens if the hearings official decision is appealed? I mean, because we've already had a, I'm just concerned to appeal the hearings official applicant, application, the applicant and the appellant have had to submit additional funds to pay for that appeal. So now what happens in this case? I mean, I'm, you know, I just want to understand, you know.
Commissioner Baker, well, that, again, is, I think, addressed in issue number four, but I can briefly respond.
We can move forward to that. Let me, I just want to put a couple of things, thoughts, that I, in reviewing everything, because I actually do understand where Commissioner Barofsky is coming from, in the sense that when the hearings official makes a determination and it comes to us on appeal, we have a very small scope of what we can actually look at and what we can influence. And, you know, and I was reading our bylaws, just for fun, and, you know, in Article II and subsection of C, it does say that part of our role is to cooperate with private developers and public agencies in an effort to provide adequate supply of housing for low-income families. And so, that is a role that is difficult to do when we have this very small sliver of what we can be looking at. So, but, you know, having said that, I do, I do support staff's recommendation on how we would move forward with procedural issue number three, but I do, I do understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Barofsky, in that to be able to have a little bit more authority on how these things are implemented and looked at, this is, this particular case is, I would agree with the direction, but there may be a situation in which, whether it's the timeline that would be, and the time and cost accrued that would be added to something. So, I appreciate that being able to take it on more of a case-by-case basis is sort of where we're at, so. Was there any other, Commissioner Beeson?
Yeah. So with respect to issue three, and assuming we're going to take a straw poll on it, I'm also going to support it. I think I concur with most of what has been said here in terms of putting it back to the hearings official for the reasons that have been stated. I think the idea of it aligning more with the normal procedures and the normal way these things are done makes a lot of sense, as opposed, and given, we've heard a number of times, this hasn't happened before, or this is new. And I think it makes some sense to do it the way that everybody who's involved in this, all the different stakeholders, or the people who have an interest in a process that they're used to or understand, is just going to, whether it's the neighbors, or the applicant, or whoever, it's just going to be better all the way around. So I'm going to support it.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we're ready for a straw poll. So, on procedural issue number three, all those in favor of the staff's recommendation? Any opposed? All right. There you have it. Oh, six, six, six to zero. Sure. Commissioner Fragle, go ahead.
And I know Commissioner Taylor is not here tonight, and that she is not able to vote on this, but at the last meeting, she did express her support for procedural issue number three and number four.
All right. Well, then, let's go ahead and move on to procedural issue number four. Do you have anything to...
You want me to...
Yeah. To...
Well, number four was, we had two appeals filed, one by the applicant, one by the Neighborhood Association. With the applicant invoking ORS 197, theirs is simple. It says, you know, you're going to get more time. So theirs is kind of put on hold, but we were wondering, what do we do with these appeals? And now that we have a second one, what do we do? So, in the sense of fairness, as we've been trying to talk about this and get to that stage, we recommended putting them on hold. That's the fairest thing that we can think of. If it goes back to the, as you just kind of voted, goes back to a hearings official, if we get a project that can go to them, if it gets appealed from there, then it will be back up to you. We've written in here that they would just have to re-up their appeal, and it would bring them back out of that holding pattern, if either one of them. So, that's kind of where we got on this one. I will let you guys discuss that ability.
All right. I have a question, but I'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, this is where I was concerned about fees. So, do we refund their fees for the time being? Because what happens if they don't appeal after the decision by the hearings official?
And we had that conversation with the planning director, and we've said that, especially with the neighbors, they haven't got a say in this yet. They could ask for their appeal now, but, or they can have it on hold, in case they need it at the end of the second one. If they are pleased with what happens at the hearings official, then they wouldn't have to appeal it, so they would get their money back. I think we were, I looked to Alyssa to...
Yeah. I mean, what we discussed is, one, making sure that nobody has to pay two appeal fees to the hearings official. That doesn't make sense. And so, the ability to put these on hold means that the appeal are still alive, the money is still, you know, it's been submitted, the fee wouldn't change on an appeal. So this gives them the ability to say, hey, we're actually happy with this. They could withdraw their appeals, either party, or they could resubmit additional appeal issues once a hearings official's decision's been made.
So if they decide to not appeal, do they, we return their funds?
They ask to withdraw that appeal, correct.
Okay. That's what I was concerned about. I just didn't know what happened, if we were returning the funds beforehand, now, or holding it and then returning it later if there isn't an appeal.
It's really up to the parties how they want to deal with their appeals and appeal fees, and we didn't want to dictate that for them. But we did want to set up, as Planning Director mentioned, a situation where no one would have to pay a second appeal fee for, because if things go the way we think they will, this appeal, the appeal issues will change, nobody's really getting anything out of this appeal. So, want to give them the opportunity to change their appeal in response to whatever the hearings official may decide on remand, but not have to pay a second appeal fee. And by putting it on hold then, also, as I mentioned before, we were trying to kind of plan for the possibility of a Luba appeal, where Luba says, sorry, no one should have invoked 197.522 in the first place. I don't think that will be the outcome, but it's a possible outcome. And so then, the appeals are still waiting, if it does come back to you.
Commissioner Barofsky, and then Commissioner Ramey.
Again, uncharted territory. So the question that I have is, I see in the final order, and I see in the record, where the applicant has agreed to a longer period of time. But I don't see anywhere in the, in the record, or in the findings, that the Laurel Hill Valley has agreed to that. And in, when it comes to the appeals in 9.7660, it says, unless the applicant and the appellant agree to a longer period of time, the Planning Commission shall hold a hearing to hear oral arguments on the appeal within 45 days. So, again, I don't, I looked through the code, and I didn't see anywhere where the authority was given to put it on hold unless the two parties that have appeals in front of us agree to a longer timeframe. So am I reading that wrong? Or do we need to get a letter from Laurel Hill Valley that says, yes, we'll wait until we see the new one? Because the way I read it, we've got 45 days from December 4th to hold a public hearing, at least on the Laurel Hill Valley's appeal issue.
So, if Laurel Hill Valley citizens would like to give us a letter wherein they say, fine, hold off, that would be, we would certainly accept that. At this point, it is my conclusion that by invoking 197.522, we can no longer comply with our code requirements. There just isn't, we can't move forward with our appeal process in the way that is outlined in the code. And so, that's in part why we're coming to you, to ask you to adopt this separate process. And part of the thinking behind asking you to adopt this separate process, as we talked about at the last meeting, is that we believe that it is a final appealable order of the Planning Commission. So if a party is unhappy with the process that you have chosen, they could appeal that up to Luba, and say, city should have complied with its code, 197.522 doesn't apply, et cetera, et cetera. So, we are, we are trying to set it up in a way that even though we are deviating from the processes outlined in the code, that interested parties have the opportunity to comment on that deviation, to challenge that deviation. It doesn't make sense to me to proceed with an appeal when we know that the underlying application will be changed. So, if we continue... So, if we continue down the timeline that's anticipated by our code, it, you could have a public hearing on one of the appeals, but not the other. You're going to make a decision on the appeal, that then the underlying application will change. None of that makes sense from a process standpoint. And so, again, this is, this is our, our best crack at the, the process that we think makes sense, is fair, is reasonable, and it may be that Luba thinks differently, but we are trying to kind of do our best to make a good guess, to give you the tools that you need to have to make a decision about a process on this thing that we just don't know that much about, and, and to set it up in such a way that the parties have the opportunity to challenge it and don't have to wait for 18 months to make those challenges.
And, and I get, and I get that. The question that I have is, one, did we reach out to the, to the other applicant and ask them if they would extend the time?
My last discussion with the representative from the association is that they will most likely request a refund because they need that money to use it for expert review of a new traffic impact analysis, a new geotech that will be coming, and then they'll have the ability to do, based on whatever happens at that new remand hearing, if they want to do a new appeal, they can do it at that time. So, I think that's what's going to happen.
So, for me, again, I think I would be happy if we reached out to them and said, can we get a letter that says you'll extend the time so that we can comply with our code, rather than just saying, eh, because it's, it is written in there that it says shall, and...
Commissioner Barofsky, if I can interrupt you for a moment. Is that it? Are you anticipating that that would happen before Planning Commission makes a decision on this order?
No, before, before, at some point, before the end of the 45 days, before the, the time runs out, would be what I would hope.
I have, I guess I have a follow-up question about that.
Okay, well, I have, I had Commissioner Ramey in the queue. Let me, but can I ask a clarifying question, because I, maybe it misses more. If they were to withdraw their appeal, get a refund, and then we end up in the same place we're at, however many months from now, because this was kicked back, have they missed the window of opportunity to go ahead and appeal the original application? I think, is that what we're, does that make sense?
You're...
So, if we don't, if they, if we, if we say, yes, we'll go ahead and put these on hold, but then they choose that, they, they choose to just go ahead and withdraw their appeal, do they miss their opportunity to appeal because of a time issue?
There would be an opportunity for anyone who participated in the remand decision in front of the hearings official, which could be anyone, because we'll reopen the record, to appeal that decision. So, it, you know, that remand decision will be based on an amended application, but we believe that that will, you know, that will then be the application that's in play. The application that has been in play so far will be so substantially changed that these appeals, for the most part, won't make sense anymore. A bunch of the appeal issues will probably change.
Okay. Commissioner Fragle, I'll let you, because I think it's relevant to this.
So, if they repeal, if they remove their appeal and get a refund, then the 45 days would no longer apply, correct? And so, they, but based on the explanation you just gave to Commissioner Edwards, they do have the opportunity, under the new process with the hearings official, to appeal.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ramey, go ahead.
This one seemed like the, the least clear of all the issues, and so, the, the thing for me about, there isn't any precedent to put something on hold, that seems like an odd idea, and, and there's nothing in the C code that allows that, I think, so I'm not sure if there is or not. But, that aside, the, the timing of it and the clock for the appellant, who is Laurel Hill Valley citizens at this point, I think you've answered the question by saying that the ORS sort of trumps the city. If you're, if you're required to do something by the ORS statute that conflicts with your own code, you gotta go to the statute first. And so, that forces our hands in saying, okay, well, that's going to be an appeal that we're going to put on hold, and then the 45-day clock is going to expire, but that's not an option that, that we have. So, that's, that's the one scenario. The second scenario was the one that you just went through with Commissioner Edwards, which, which seems like what we're hearing, and I think what was in some of the documentation we received, is that the second, the, the reapplication is going to be so different that all parties, or at least the, the citizens, are going to want to step back and, and have a whole nother run at a whole new application. So, for them, it's going to work. And so, that, that was really my concern about this, is the concept of putting something on hold. What does that do to the clock for the, for the citizens? And then, do they, do they have an ability to come back if somehow Luba says, whoops, sorry, you're back to square one again? But I think your answer to our chair, Commissioner Taylor, wow, I was so close, Commissioner Edwards, really satisfied that for me. So, I think, given, it, it's a very nebulous kind of issue in front of us, but I think we've walked through scenarios where this particular application, this particular set that faces us, and I'm, I'm okay with what the staff has recommended in this case.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I, I, I'm relatively comfortable with four, but I had one other question, just a clarification. So, if the applicant decides to, are they, is the applicant allowed to unre-invoke this thing during the process?
That's a great question.
You know, and that, that was like my repeating, can they...
Can they invoke it a couple of times, yeah.
But this, this one is a little more of the beginning process, rather than...
I, you know, again, we don't really know. We don't have Luba or Court of Appeals decisions on that point. I would vigorously advocate that you give one bite at the apple. This is a one bite at the apple kind of thing. And so, you don't, doesn't give the applicants a chance to propose a series of amendments, and it doesn't give an applicant a chance to amend, and then reneg and amend, and...
You answered that last time, but I was more about what happens if they decide to pull their application, what happens to the process?
When you say pull their application...
When they uninvoke 197-522.
It would drop their appeal. No, 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 they would go forward with their appeal.
Right, yeah. So, if the applicant...
Right.
...decided not to, somehow to uninvoke 197-522.
Is it possible to uninvoke it once? It's, in other words, did they file their fee, or did, you know, is there any?
It's, it's a good question. I would say, at this point...
I mean, it's unlikely that they will uninvoke, but just so we know, you know, if they change their mind and how they're going to approach this.
I don't think the statute says much about it, but I will say that, you know, at this point in the process, given the hearings official's denial on a bunch of different fronts, it seems unlikely to me that the applicant would want to continue with that structure of the application, because they're unlikely, you know, obviously, Planning Commission could do something different than what the hearings official did, but based on the number of reasons for denial, the likelihood of a denial at Planning Commission seems reasonably high. So, I don't know why the applicant would want to go back to that initial application. But that, that's just my two cents. I can't speak for what the applicant wants to do.
So, in other words, I mean, I agree with you in this case, but I'm just trying to get an idea whether it's possible to uninvoke this and then mess up our process.
Well, my hope is that before, before I come back to you again on this issue, we might have some more clarity from Luba or the Court of Appeals, or the legislature, or, you know, whomever. And/or, that might be kind of another one of those issues that is outside the scope of this conversation, but is part of a larger legislative conversation about how the city, looking forward, wants to handle these types of invocations, and if, if it's possible for the city to put some bumpers on that, et cetera.
Okay. Does everybody have their questions answered and feel that they're ready to do a straw poll on procedural issue number four? All right, I will ask of the commissioners, all those in favor of staff's recommendation of procedural issue number four, which is to put current appeals on hold. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we have six, zero in favor. All right. Okay, so, that brings us then, I guess, to the draft final order. Oh, do you have, oh, you have it. So, yeah, I have a motion. Oh, you do, okay. Well, I will then entertain, oh...
I'm sorry.
That's okay?
I interrupted.
You may.
So, just for Planning Commission's information, there are, I believe, two or three very small, non-substantive changes between the December 30th version of the draft final order and the, the final version that we're asking you to adopt, that Dan has in his hot little hand.
So, this is not it right here?
Well, the, so the changes are this. On page five, there was a typo, we accidentally missed a three, so instead of EC 9.715, it now reads EC 9.7315, which is the correct citation.
Yep, see that?
At the top of page six, kind of two-thirds of the way down the paragraph, there was a "and slash" conditions that should have been "and/or slash" conditions, so added in that "or." And then changed the date on the order to this January 6th instead of December 30th, and changed the signature to Chair Edwards instead of Vice Chair Fragle, because Chair Edwards is, is here tonight. So, those are the, those are the changes.
All right. I will then entertain a motion if there is one.
So, I move to adopt the final order of the Eugene Planning Commission on procedural issues related to the hearings official's decision on the Laurel Ridge tentative PUD application. City filed PDT 183, including the revisions that were just stated.
All right, any discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Barofsky seconds it, and comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the process, again, thank the commission for indulging me on, on some of these procedural issues. I, I get into them sometimes, and I just, I just want to make sure that the, the questions get asked and, and answered to the best of their ability. With regard to this development, you know, this isn't the first time I've seen this, this development brought before us. And for me, it's, it's a large chunk of land inside the urban growth boundary that's zoned for housing. It's a, it's a very nice neighborhood, it's adjacent to the neighborhood that I live in, so I have, I have concerns about how it's going to be developed. I just hope that, at some point, it can be developed in a manner that is applicable to both a developer that can make it pencil out, and to the neighbors that have to, have to live with the impacts of these types of developments. I'm sorry that it takes so long and so much money to go through this process. That's me personally. You know, there was, there was stuff in the record that, that there's been over $3 million spent trying to get a shovel in the ground for these, for this area, and, and that, that's disturbing to me as a planning commissioner, because we know that there's a housing issue in our community. And so, I think that the, this, this code that we're dealing with here, and the statute from the state, was a stab at trying to be able to make things work, you know? It's like, okay, you, you went at it, and it didn't quite meet it, so take another bite at the apple. So, I'm, and I'm hoping that this, this process can do that, and make it work for the neighbors, make it work for the developers, and make it work for the people in our city that need housing. So, I just wanted to say that before the vote.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I just want to say, I, I echo Commissioner Barofsky's sentiments about this, you know, this development, and just reading through all the materials and being relatively new to it, because I wasn't, you know, here one, the different times that it came before the Planning Commission in the past, but definitely, for me, it illustrated why it's so important that we continue to work on some of the, the things that we're already currently working on, the clear and objective standards, and, you know, the tree preservation standards were a big part of that, and we kind of left that in limbo, because we, we really, we really didn't land anywhere with, with how to move forward on that. But this is a really, to me, a perfect example of, of why it is so critical that we have a process that can be, you know, remove the subjectivity and just the complete ambiguity to, to so much of it. When I'm looking at 75 acres inside our UGB that has been earmarked for housing and development, and, you know, the whole reason that we even have UGBs in the first place is to pervert, preserve farm and forest lands, among other things, but that are outside of that, those lines. And so, when we're treating areas inside those lines, just the same way we would, you know, that are not earmarked for housing and development, you know, I feel like we have work to do. So, I think I look forward to continuing to, to do this work, so I will just say that. And with that, I will call for a vote. So, if anyone else has nothing else to add, all those in favor of the motion? All right, any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, six, zero. Commissioner Barofsky?
One more question. This is outside of this, this thing, this is just a, can you give us any update on the Simons' appeal from Luba?
I can. The, the decision has been appealed to the Court of Appeals. Oral argument is scheduled.
You might want to make them aware of which one that is. Do you guys all know which one this, we're talking about here? This was the one that, when we, it was the site review on those properties in the Whittaker that we said site review applies. That got, that got appealed up to Luba, and Luba remanded it, and now you can take over. Because I, because I just wanted, I just wanted them all to be on board with it.
Yes, I feel like you even need me, so, that is all correct. Luba remanded, the city appealed Luba's decision to the Court of Appeals. Briefing has already happened, oral argument is scheduled for this Thursday. And I, the Court of Appeals then has up to, I was saying, it's either 90 or 95 days to make a decision, unless they give themselves more time, but they usually make the decision within that time.
All right. And I just want to note that your next scheduled meeting is Monday, the 27th of January. It's a 11:30 meeting, and it's about clear and objective, and I believe trees may be on that agenda. Not that one, then the very next meeting, so clear and objective will be coming back to you. I think we've got you scheduled for two meetings to walk through some of the code changes on that.
And I had a question about that. So, do we have some direction from council as to what they would like for us to look at?
Yes, and I, you're going to learn all about that in, when you get your agenda item summary. But council did look at it, they did say, hey, we want this to move on to the next steps, but if you could go back to Planning Commission on a couple of things, one of them being trees, and I'm not...
Transitions.
Yeah, I think transitions was another one, and then maybe the 300-foot setback. So, you'll be seeing some of that, and I think there may have been four things, actually, but I, yeah, trees for sure. So, that will be, that will be coming back to you. The first meeting on that is January 27th, so.
Okay. We'll look forward to that. All right, anything else from staff or commissioners? Commissioner Baker?
I just wanted to mention that the Historic Review Board met, and, and there was another local historic landmark established for, looking for my notes, which I have here somewhere, but this pile of paper, it was for, it was Dean of the Architecture School, Dean Harris, and it was his, the house that he built up in the South Hills, it's, it's an unusual house, and it, it was, it was awarded a local historic Eugene city landmark for the house, and it, it provides some protection so that the house later on doesn't get so remodeled that you wouldn't, you know, recognize the exterior.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.